What's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Make the motion, sign the law.
I will make the motion and sign the law.
All in favor?
And I'll make a motion in the next minute, March thirteenth. As written and March fifteenth as written.
You have a second?
I'll be there.
Once there is fifty-one thousand dollars on a school generator, which is not going to be handed out until we get the end of August. It should be on there somewhere, just instinctively. But I did ask, I said, we're waiting, we've got part of the money, we're waiting for the rest of it. But we don't actually have it to give out, to front it, the money has to come from the bank. Okay, real business. So, we have some people here to talk about Benner Harbor, Melissa and Kyle, Kyle and Kyle. And Amanda, you might remember your name.
Well, I'll start it, I'll give a quick introduction. We have, for several years, we've been working on the Federal Harbor project. And it's always gotten to a certain point, and then it's always stalled because we get to that point, we don't know where to go from here. Well, luckily, Maine Coast Heritage Trust is now being an active help to us to actually get the project up and going. We still have a lot of kinks that we need to work out and minor details in order to put in an application. But the two things that we're really looking for is support from the town, so we're not doing all this in vain. And for you guys to understand that if we do apply for this grant, where the town owns that property, the town is the ones that are essentially applying per se grant. And so, I kind of need it okay with that. They can provide far more details. We found a couple of different grants. One, we kind of wasn't going to give us what we needed and had quite a few restrictions. But we started looking at the Small Harbor Improvement Grant, which allows us a much higher window. But one major thing that we need to figure out, which is really going to determine the price, is how far down we need to put footers to hit solid ground right there. And in all honesty, we got to do a little bit of exploration before it might be so far down, we might just have to scrap the project.
What does the project entail?
So what we're trying to do is there is, the area itself is up Straight Bay, and it's across from Lion Street. There's a road there that's really washed out. The bank is washed out. So what we want to do is provide a couple of parking areas. We want to fix that road and then reinforce the bank and put down a boat slide, kind of like we have at Little Augusta. So you can put small boats in and out, something that can be picked up. And the great thing about this area is the clambers are going to be going out there on the downside of the tide. And it can still be used for recreational uses on the upside of the tide. So it can fit multiple needs. And like with this grant that I was looking at, they were talking about it can be used for recreational fishing. It can be used for commercial fishing.
So what are the footings that you need?
That we, that's our unknown. It's footings to support so the thing doesn't sink.
What thing?
The, the boat sled.
Oh.
So it's, it's literally a, it's kind of like it. It's, it, it's designed, it's a slide. So you put the boat down on it, and then it has stairs that you can slide the boat down the ramp to get it down, because that's a very steep hill. So it's not the easiest thing to get a canoe down, trust me, I know.
So, but in the incoming tide and the high tide, it'd be easier to get out.
Yes.
So do you have any idea how much it's going to cost?
It can be a very wide range. It, it depends on what we get back or how far we, but it can be upwards of a hundred and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Is this state or federal grant?
This is a DOT grant.
The ship grant is, is state, I believe.
State, yes.
But it's fifty, fifty.
Do you guys like to add?
Yeah.
Yes.
So yes, maybe Kyle can share.
You know more about this aspect than I do.
Oh, yeah, thanks Amanda, you did. So I'm Kyle Cook and I'm the, have the regional stewardship manager. And, and so how I'm involved is that I, I manage preserves, but I also manage conservation easements, which is why I'm involved with this particular project. And Kyle Winslow, I'll let him introduce himself, but he's my supervisor. And, and he has a different role with Maine Coast Heritage Trust.
I'll follow up at the end if you want to discuss.
Okay, yeah, we'll keep it going. So, so yeah, there are different grant options. Melissa paid the way, she, of course, she retired of a lot of, two different options. Grants are really tricky, and we've been, we have been looking into others. The DOT grant, I, you know, I, it has, has a lot more potential, I think, than the VPL, the, the, the recreational building grant. But as Amanda said, we just, what, all we need right now is just if the town approves us funding the project. I know that there was also a discussion about storm damage to the town here.
That's, that's really topical, like, if the commercial pier is in bad shape and we need, we need to talk about it.
And so when I followed up with kind of my supervisor, we, it doesn't need to be mutually exclusive between Federal Harbor West and, and the town here. You know, Kyle, you know.
In other words, you can work in silence both of them separately.
Yeah.
And I think we're also going to be working on, since President Biden signed off on emergency requests from the governor, that now with storms from January ninth through thirteenth, we're, Suzette's working on taking some Zoom classes on how, on how to try to get some money for that as well. So hopefully, we can put the two and two together. Sometimes you can use one grant as matching funds for another, depends on how, how it's structured. So we're hoping maybe that, that money could possibly work with the ship grant. We've done that in the past.
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful. Yeah, I was just going to say, since we talked, you know, with the, you know, we do have grant options, and I can continue with that if the town approves the Federal Harbor request. And then for the town here, Kyle Winslow, since this is, Lubec is in the region of focal area, that he can work with the town.
Well, I guess the only question I have is to, so if this select board were to vote and agree to go forward, I think we would all want to know that it would be contingent on the feasibility of actually, or the probability of actually getting the matching funds. So it would have to be subject, although we'd like you to work on that if it's outrageous and things just keep going up and up, that we may or may not be able to get the matching funds, so.
And, and matching funds is a, is a, can be a difficult thing. We do have funding available to help out, like, you know. And see if, how else Maine Coast Heritage Trust could assist with, with that.
With the Federal Harbor one?
Yes, with the Federal Harbor.
And I did hear that possibly the value of the land could be considered as partial, part of the matching funds. I mean, we're not sure about that yet.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not very grant expert in this case, and unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it tonight. But, but some detail, it sounds like there's a lot of options for the match, but we just, we need a detailed description of each different, you know, letters.
So what do you need from us tonight? A whether a vote of approval that to go ahead with looking for options for grants for Federal Harbor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? So that will be in the minutes, that. Now, as far as going forward with grants for the commercial pier, are you going to help with that as well?
Yeah, so I'm ha, so I'll just, real quick, I'm, my name's Kyle Winslow. I've worked with Kyle for Maine Coast. So I'm, so Melissa Lee retired at the end of 2023.
I'm not letting you retire.
She came with her own volition, by the way. So I've, I've, I've moved into that position. So my role in, in stewardship is, is managing our concerned lands, the Bold Coast Region, Lubec, Trescat, Cutler. So I'd, I'd be happy to chat with you more about ways that we might be able to help out with that. And Jacob Van Assen might be able to, maybe we can get you to come to the Harbor Board meeting. Because after we've been discussing a lot of the commercial pier.
Well, I think we're going to let maybe Suzette sit through some of the reimbursements that they're, they're thinking we might be able to get. And if we could coordinate that with the small, I can also look up the Small Harbor Improvement Grant myself. We've already written a few of them.
Yeah, don't hesitate, you can reach out.
Yes, and I imagine Maine Coast Heritage Trust has been very helpful on lots of projects, and we definitely thank you.
Can we get your contact?
Yes.
We only did one.
And also, so you know, I'm going to be the contact on the Federal Harbor grant, just because I have so much experience with that beach and I'm willing to take it on. So I didn't want stuff on anybody's toes by my name being the contact, but I'll keep you guys informed.
So if the ship grant is a local, is a DOT grant, then the town can't even apply for it without having a local project administrator, which I'm certified to do at least for the next little while. And Suzette has just retaken the court, so we do have a local project administrator in, in the town of Lubec. Either Suzette or you can ask me as well. So you can't even apply without, without it. So it's just funny, you know.
But I'm here.
Okay, Amanda, I know you're, you've wanted to do this for a long time.
About seven years.
Do we have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, you know, find some good ones.
Can I ask you a question just about next step? So if we, if we find, are able to find grants to help fund this, do, do we need to, to come back to the town once we have engineering plans?
Even for Federal Harbor?
Yeah.
I think the only meeting we need is the town meeting to accept the grant.
That's if you get the grant?
Well, if we get the grant. But it's also, we have to pay too.
You haven't even applied. So I think the application process requires a public hearing, it usually does. And at that time, you would bring preliminary plans and cost estimates. That's when the town would, would sign off, the actual taxpayers would sign off and agree that the grant is proper. So you don't, don't do like all this work, but we've had that happen before, like before my time. So to, I would get preliminary engineering, just preliminary, and then I would get a rough estimate and some sort of drawing of your idea. I mean, literally, the Save Harbor grant was drawn by myself and our master to start. I mean, we didn't even have an engineer, just, just to get it passed by the town. It's not like you have to spend lots of money. You can literally sketch out your, your ideas and what you, and then maybe you get someone else giving you the process, and then we'll take it to the town. So if the town isn't behind it, then there's no point in doing it. And we can say, go ahead, but we, we don't, we're not going to speak for accepting a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant, which sixty thousand has to come from us without their approval. And some idea, and at that meeting, that's where you'd say, well, maybe Maine Coast is going to put in twenty. We've already got ten set aside for Federal Harbor, so that's thirty of the sixty, and then other ideas. And then the plan committee has some money set aside, and that would be after the plan committee. So when you get to that stage of drawings and some, some kind of estimate, because I know those, those, those things, when you see how mushy the ground is and all we have to pay for the dock in front of the marina, originally, they wanted ten thousand dollars to do those probies. And I got, I think I got them down to six. But that's expensive, so you probably want the town behind spending even that kind of money. Although you do have seed money there to see whether it's even able to be done. So that's about all I can tell you about it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Clear as mud.
Yeah, but if you find a really good grant and you, and you get to the point, you got to come, you got to put it down. We can hook you now before it's done, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you guys for the time.
Thanks for your effort.
Definitely appreciate it.
And your advance effort, thanks.
Okay, so Dicky, did you want to go next, as a manager? You did some great work down there with those rocks, and I mean, the rocks were falling into the ocean, and he took them back home and made this wonderful row of rocks, took some of the rocks from the wedge, and I mean, I love it.
If I could add to that, the water is running down the tunnel, not down the road.
I, yeah, well, he made this, take a seat.
No.
You got to drive by there, it's really amazing.
Maybe he can come up to the bison ranch and do something there.
He had a spare time. Do you have anything specific you want to tell us tonight?
I do have some, I do have some notes and whatnot, some files, some bodies going on and whatnot.
You want to do the item first?
Sure.
Okay, so we will, first on the agenda is water leak by the post office repair bill. And I believe Nancy has done some research on this.
So I'll be quick. I shared, I shared these with the board, and I'm sharing it with you. And I attended, and the dilemma is, there's seven thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents that the select board has to identify a line to take the money from this year for a water main leak in front of the post office. There's discrepancy and challenges around the whole procedure that day. And that's had a couple of meetings, and there's a new proposal, and I'll leave that for when I'm done. Because, because we started talking water, I went to the PUC website, which, you know, has a lot of things, and has a short report on all the towns. And they advise you to go look at state statutes. So I went looking on the state statutes, and Title thirty-five is all about public utilities. And there's many, I have a big stack of things that interest me, and our mandated accounting and a bunch of stuff. But two, that I want to bring to the attention of the board tonight, because I think, I think we should do something, and I'm wondering what you're thinking. The first one that I shared with you is on the water. And on number five in there, that's the one that's checked the four water districts and standard districts. Number five talks about an annual report that the Water Department Board of Trustees is, that they have to supply to the town, and it has to include a report of the treasurer. I don't know that I've ever seen one of them from the Water Department. So the other section in there, number seven, talks about the water district trustees' compensation. And it talks about how the Water Department trustees can recommend it, but it has to be approved by a majority of the municipal offices of the municipality, including compensation for any duties they perform as officers, as well as for their duties as trustees, which just started a whole bunch of more questions in my head. I don't know that that's ever happened. So I did ask the Water District, and I did find out that the last time that there was any change in their stipend was in 2021, and it went from five hundred to a thousand dollars, and that is presently their stipend. So that was like my first concern. So the next piece that I looked at was, the next one that I gave you is sixty-four A, which there's a whole law about consolidation of consumer-owned water utilities into a single consumer-owned water utility. And basically, talks about combining your water and your sewer. So I went hunting on the PUC website, and there's probably fifty percent of towns or cities in the state that have one utility. Some of them have it combined, and it's all one thing. Some of them have a water district and still a sewer district, but they're under one administration. So that got me wondering about Lubec. And I wondered if we should give consideration to looking into that. And the things that it most kind of, to me, made me think it might be advantageous to the town is that it would kind of facilitate that collaboration we want to see. I think that it would probably have less administrative costs, because it'd be one place doing things, and as it is already, the town does billing for the sewer, but the water does billing for the water. But information has to exchange before the sewer bill can go out. And then the other thing as a possible really benefit of this idea is as a rate payer, it's one bill. So that's just my query of thoughts that came up as I kind of started looking into this. And then I have a whole bunch of other questions around that treasurer report they're supposed to have, and their expenses and their revenues. And I did get some information from them that I asked, but like, I got a lot of stuff. So I don't know if we want to consider a select board workshop to kind of look at this stuff, or what you want to do. I don't, here's my quandary.
I think first of all, we should, we should accept the proposal, book four.
First of all, I don't, see, Kyle, this has anything to do with the question at hand. The question at hand is dig down Front Street, not whether the board has our audit been or not, which we have not received our final audit. And it's public information, you can get that anytime you want. Have a look at our last year's audit, that's complete.
Everybody submits a report, the, the LCOC, the library, all, all that goes in our annual report. I'm surprised that we don't get a one-page report from the Water District to include in the rest of our reports in the Lubec annual report. That would be nice if we got that, so maybe we can work on that. As far as these other rules, they just, we've never, I guess, looked into it before. But what happened was when we didn't get the, so we got a letter in front of us offering to repay us the remainder of the half of the bill. So in order to discuss this proposal of giving us the rest of the half of the bill of the water leak that was by the post office, which isn't going to be paid till a year and a half from now, do we want to hear, does the public want to hear a little bit of the history of where we got, got this far? Or do we just want to say yea or nay to the proposal?
I'll make the motion, we accept the proposal. I mean, let's get it behind us and move on. That's my thought.
And you don't want to say?
I'd be with some conditions. And that means getting it.
Do, we, we have to have a second before we even can talk about it, so is there a second? Even you do not have to approve of it. Okay, now, let's open to discussion. I think a year and a half is way too long, it's ridiculous, that's my opinion.
No, the reason why that we put that year and a half in there is because we believe that it was not a water leak, we believe it was a sewer leak. Where they just dug and repaired the water leak they broke, they made, the sewer leak is going to come back. It's a forced main that runs down through Front Street. The only time it leaks is when they pump the ship from the ship plant to the boat main. That's why it comes and it goes, and it comes and it goes.
Why do we need two summers' dels?
Because it's going to take time for that to expose back up true. And it's going to be, it's going to be there. We've been watching this for five years.
Donovan Construction insists that it was a water leak. And I have, I have the writing.
I don't want to beat a dead horse.
Well, and it wouldn't be beating a dead horse if you paid half the bill in the first place.
Anyone in this room would know that if this has been leaking for five years, they never even put a pump in the hole to fix the hole broke. If it was a dry hole, they never put, they never pumped one ounce of water out of the hole. If that's been leaking with eighty-pound pressure in five years, you would have had a major, the whole thing would have been flooded down there, the ground would have been all gone, it had been aging long before that. That is the reason why I would like to say the board recommended we could have this town with allowance. And, I mean, this is what I have brought forth through our board, trying to resolve this issue to get it behind us.
Yep. No, and I appreciate, I appreciate the, the effort, Dallas. And just being kind of devil's advocate, I, I do worry, you're, you're guys are going for what? A pretty sizable grant for your infrastructure, right, for the water lines?
Yep.
That side of me starts to think, okay, are we just going to be dealing with a ticking time bomb downtown, and then we're held liable for a system that's on the edge? You know what I mean? So it's like, couldn't we just be chasing our tail and then be on the hook for a bill for a, uh, infrastructure that I feel like is probably at risk as it is, downtown water and sewer?
Well, the oldest lines that the Lubec has is Norcalback.
Okay. Not downtown?
No. Lines in Norcalback was put in in nineteen oh one.
A year and a half is, is, any other leak could surface by that.
That's what I'm thinking, just like with another leak surface.
And there was no smell. We have a construction company that insists there was no corporation there, there was no corporation on the map, no corporation broke, and that when they took a hand shovel and touched the water main, that it broke. It just dissolved because it was rotted, it rotted out, which is why you have the gusher. And then they had to repair it live because the Water Department couldn't even get the water shut off. And we came to you, we, so for the public, the town, the select board has gone twice to the Water Department's meetings. Once Dan and I went, and Dicky, and secondly, Nancy went. And the first time we went, we asked for the whole bill. And the Water Department said, no, we're not going to pay it, because we think it wasn't a water leak. So then we offered to pay half. And they insisted that not only would they not pay half, that they would maybe pay a third as long as the Sewer Department and us paid the other two-thirds. So I feel that offering to pay half by the town's taxpayer was a very fair offer, and that you should have jumped on that half at the very beginning. And all of this is something that you, as a water trustee, has prolonged. And we're just, we're just representing the taxpayer. And you also have taxpayers.
As am I, yeah, as am I, I, I am too.
And it was a water leak, so you're still denying that it's not a water leak and I'm not.
It is not a water leak. We have been there and tested that. We have been dealing with this for five years, people. And we have been there at numerous occasions, and we have tested. There was no fluoride in it. We tried to get our gate off, the gate that you said that we couldn't shut off is because it was full of human shit.
Well, there was a sewer problem there a year ago, Dallas, and they had to hook up.
Now, wait a minute, don't be hostile, I'm not, I'm just answering your questions that you're putting words into my mouth, and I'm not alone. Is, your, your town pool was down Front Street. And they were having the drains sucked out. We could not even get that drain down there. Our gate valve that you put the wrench in, turned it off because it was full of shit, 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 stunk like shit.
That has nothing to do with the leak.
Boy, you smell work hard.
It was four feet from the, where the surface water was coming out, you guys are staying. That's like, that's the gate that we had to shut off. And that, they had to come over and, they had to have that guy come over and suck it out for us, because we couldn't get through. Am I right or wrong, Dicky? If you get vacuumed out, and it's not like shit, the chimney was there, we made.
So five years of this going on, and how is the amount of money been determined? If there's a meter somewhere that shows that this water is leaked, and, so if you come up with a bill?
No, that was the repair.
Oh, no, that was the bill. Repair bill, repair bill, it was ten thousand seven hundred dollars. And part of it was because the Water Department wasn't available the day they, they brought all their equipment to date, because one was out and the other one didn't show up. So that doubled, that doubled the bill.
And in reference to that also, the town knew that they were going to dig that six weeks in advance, and conveniently made it at one of the meetings that one of our employees had appointed me to.
No, I don't think so.
And usual, as a, as a representative of the board, we try to make sure that we have both our full-time employees on a main water rate. That should never have been dug without the water company even being in there.
It wasn't. And if you didn't come, you were notified, you were notified, and if you didn't come, that's not our fault. DigSafe notified you, we have papers, we're the.
You guys are lucky we paid what we paid, okay?
Can I ask you a question, Dallas?
Yes.
You said you tested it, right, and there was no fluoride in it?
That's right.
Okay.
Chlorine.
Okay, wasn't the fluoride removed, you said fluoride, wasn't that removed last year?
Yeah.
We've been testing this for five years. Five years.
And there was no chlorine in it?
There was no chlorine and no fluoride.
Okay, now, does it, the wastewater treatment plant also put chlorine in their water?
I know.
It wouldn't be visible down there.
It wouldn't be visible down there?
Dallas, a year ago, the post office did have a sewer leak, because apparently they weren't hooked up properly to the sewer lines. And that was all dug in their front yard, and that was, you, everybody saw it. Big trench between the, the flagpole and the, and the.
Because they had the wrong set of system. Before there was any digging down, period, the Sewer Department was there and the Water Department was there. Both together, they both took samples, they both took them away, they both come back within point zero two of the same reading. Therefore, they could not determine whose leak it was.
So that's why the town, okay, so the US Post Office called us up and asked, called Suzette, and asked if you could please fix the leak. And there's a picture here of, of, uh, of the leak with someone standing by, where they had sealed the post office, uh, parking lot, and they couldn't seal this part here because the leak was too bad. And they called to say, could you please do something about the leak? So we called the Water Department yet again and, and said that, you know, it's a water leak, and you refused to say, nope, it's not, it's a sewer leak. So we decided, for the best interest of the town and to, in the safe space with the US Post Office, we would take it upon ourselves as a town to hire somebody to fix the leak. So we got someone who was, time was, time was of the essence. So we got Donovan Construction, who was working on our sewer upgrade, to come over, stop what they were doing and come over. But we called DigSafe, it's all noted, it's all documented. You were given three to four days notice, which is all you need by law, seventy-two hours, I believe I read. And that there was gonna be a dig take place on that Monday. And they mobilized their equipment on, on that Sunday. I think it was November fifth. They just dug, it's supposed to be dug on the sixth, but both of your employees were not available. So they dug on the seventh with one of your employees there. So it was, well, then, if there was nobody there, then that's your fault, not ours.